All right.
No, we had.
Eleven.
We drove a lot of.
It's.
We did.
So.
Oh, that's.
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
We just.
Place.
We.
We didn't get there.
I think they were.
I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're.
Sort of.
Sort of.
They're.
I'm not.
They don't rely on.
And.
Well, I have.
Well, yeah.
We had.
We had.
We had chickens and stuff.
We had.
Four.
We had four.
Yeah, these.
So.
And it's.
That's right.
He did say.
So good.
They're taking his.
Yeah.
History things?
Yeah.
From this.
They're.
Super.
Just really.
They're.
But yeah.
We.
We.
Break out.
You guys know.
Where. You can.
Three.
I'm going to.
Oh.
Everything's. The.
I was.
To.
And.
Yeah.
I need.
I'm sorry.
I'm.
So.
You've been.
We get.
There.
I got.
Thank you.
Grab.
There's a.
A form on.
Bottom.
Hold on.
When she.
When she.
Comes.
Yeah. I. Yeah. So. I should give that to the. But there's. A. The part of China. We get. A lot of. So. I'm going. Going.
People like to have a little bit.
Not so much.
Really.
So.
Oh, actually, somebody's already got married or something's old. There's a. Or. You know.
It's.
Other than this.
I don't know.
Yeah.
In this year, one day is giving them a precision or statewide news. Otherwise, everything. I know. What's all that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because you might.
Yeah. And you were. Don't. That too.
Oh, yeah. Really. What?
What? Positive, positive comments.
Yes.
I haven't never heard somebody like, why are they doing that? But no, it's all like, oh, I really enjoy it, so.
Oh.
It's impossible.
People got upset with me last year. Better. Said you.
I think we're here.
Roots and.
Okay.
We saw.
But.
People are going to get upset.
I think.
You have.
Down.
Yeah. It's.
Sniff.
Wow.
Wouldn't.
So.
He would have.
There's good news, bad news, there's this, there's not everybody's opinion to me, that's okay.
That's what.
You don't have to agree once we still.
Twenty.
Right.
So.
Talk about it and it's like, we gotta have like, there's not a way out. Right. Out. The wall. There.
Um. To do this.
Exactly.
We.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's.
Right.
And exactly.
My.
Didn't have to.
They.
They.
The.
They.
Cause they know.
They.
Some.
Better.
So.
Wow.
Well, that's.
My.
Yeah.
Sure.
There's days we probably don't look.
Correct.
That's.
More.
Really.
Yes.
Your.
And reports. Now. Charlie. Sir. Marketing.
I'm.
Yeah.
Chris.
It's nine o'clock. It's nine o'clock, I'm gonna call the meeting of the Cottington County Commissioners to order. Um, if you'd please rise, I'll have Commissioner Johnson lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the five. The United States of America. And further, we will not. Take this hand. One nation. Under God. And given the whole. Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Oh.
Um. Uh, number two is a call for public comment, if somebody would like to make public comment, they can do so here in person. Or use the telephone numbers, uh. Six oh five eight eight two six two four eight. Or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. And if you have a cell phone, we'd appreciate if you would silence it and if you need to take the call. Um. We would like it if you could do it in the hallway. Thank you. Um. Number three. Is there any conflict of interests?
No.
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 Hey. Number four. Need a motion to approve the December third agenda.
Second.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Number five. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the November twenty six twenty four meeting.
Don't move.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable, is there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. In. Number six. We'll have, uh. Ray Kranz come up and. Fill us in on the insurance.
Morning.
For our. Employees.
Time of the year.
That's.
Thank you.
Oh.
Thank you. It's heavy.
Turn. Yep.
Okay.
You're green, you're. You're green or red.
Those.
Um. Well, I think. All of you know, but where we're at right now, um, this year, we did have a. Nine point four percent rate increase, uh. Not much of a surprise, I just wanted to come and see if there's any questions and I wanted to give you the same, uh, kind of presentation, so you kind of have an idea of what. What's going on again, I, I, uh. The first page on the right side, they have the rate history. It kind of, it's like, I think it's good information for people to have where it's gone and. Where it's going, I have no idea, I'm guessing it's just gonna keep on going up, it's pretty ugly. Um, something on the bottom that I think it's, it's very interesting for you. Um, the expected loss ratio. From November of last year till right now is at one hundred and twenty nine point oh seven percent. So they've taken in one point one million dollars in premiums, um, change. And they're expected to pay out one point four five million. So. Um. It's kind of interesting on the left side, the claim loss ratio. That first sheet. I, I, I think we're a little bit fortunate that, uh. You know, earlier in the year. The loss ratio was less, like ninety seventy two eighty two. Uh, in, in the earlier months of the year, and they started doing their estimates, their renewal. For this year, based on those numbers. And based on different problems they've had. Then you can see what happens is, uh. I mean, by June, they've already released, it doesn't get approved within a company and everything else, so I think we're. I don't mean to say we're lucky, but nine percent. For the twenty nine percent off ratio isn't good. So. I mean, put it, I wanted to put it. So. But you can see as it went on, by the time we got to. May, by the time all the claims came in, they're at two hundred and forty five percent and just in May. And losses. You know, so. But right now, at the end of the year, the totals for the last twelve months, hundred and twenty nine point oh seven percent. Losses. So. Not pretty. Anybody have any questions on that at all?
Is that normally at the end of the year pickup, just because it's getting to the end of the year, people want to use their. Uh.
What?
Insurance or?
Um, sometimes right at the end of the year, if you've met your deductible, things will do that type of thing. But, uh, honestly, because we've only got through October.
Oh, okay.
You know? So. Um.
That's probably like you're gonna have to have extra silence in the morning to get our.
That.
Through the shape here.
Yes.
My.
Sure.
Okay.
Great question. What?
Say.
Well, yes, I mean, what they do is what they call an IBNR, that's what the back of the loss ratio, so they kind of know what. What. You know, like what surgeries have been done, they haven't like a plan of that. You know, so they, they're just estimating at the end of the year, you know? So. It, it isn't as for sure, but it's an estimate, it's one hundred and twenty nine percent. Why? What they're at. So. And. There's no reason for them to fudge that number because they've already given you the rating.
Oh.
Just. Just. No, I understand, I'm just wanna make sure that. Cause I don't always trust insurance companies either. So that much. Though, the other page, I think most of you already have this, but the, I mean, just on the, what we're gonna give to the. Employees, if you approve this. Insurance. Um, what their rates would be. Everything else, we don't determine that, you, you obviously do, and I think with the negotiations with the union, that's what you come up with. So. Um. The. Backside is just the actual, I mean, this page is just the actual renewal. So this is what we'd have written to sign if you go ahead and. With the. Proposal. There's really not much to it, to be honest with you, we're at a hundred and twenty nine percent loss ratio, we got nine percent rate increase.
That's not bad.
Unfortunately. Unfortunately, it's. Not.
I mean.
Bad, but.
The loss, the race, loss ratio is high.
Yeah.
The increases.
There's a big advantage at Sanford, and I've said that year after year. The hospital systems, when they lose money, they lose it to themselves.
Mm hmm.
You know, so that does help a lot. But. You know, it's still, it's still a lot. You know, but they can. They can afford to do the, do so with. With that.
How many employees do we have on the county's insurance plan?
On the left side, there, on the renewal, or on the back row, there. Um, it says it what it is on each tier. On the back page of this. Right here.
Yeah.
It's, uh, you look at option one, we have fifty one singles and five families. Um, seventeen singles and option two, which is the four thousand dollars, that's all six families. And then option three, which said two thousand dollars, we have eleven singles and two families. So. That's where we're at. So. And. My understanding is the union negotiations were to keep these, these two same plans. I mean, there are a lot of different options that you can go to, but just confusing. Everything, so. Not sure what helped.
We need a.
I'll make a.
Motion to.
So.
Motion by Van Duzen.
Thank.
Second by Johnson. Um, any other? Questions on the health? Coverage?
I'm not sure if you fight with Sanford on that or not, but if you do, thank you. We, we appreciate that, I mean, we don't appreciate a nine percent increase, but that could be a lot worse, and I know in other industries it is, so.
You know, from time to time, when it doesn't seem right.
Yeah.
I do fight it.
Yeah.
You know, but this year, there's not much fighting.
Right.
It's just really, I mean, the, if we tried to fight it, it would be, it'd be worse.
It could be worse, yeah.
The, yeah, the numbers are the numbers, so we. That's just how it plays out, so we just, you know.
It, yeah. And. Honestly. Um, you know, there used to be a good competition for him, but right now with Sanford Clinic not taking a there. Sanford doesn't really have that much competition, so it's really hard to, in today's world, to fight it as much as I could. He's there to help.
Right.
So.
Well. Any other? Questions?
Thank you for what you.
All.
Yeah.
Do.
Force.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks.
Right.
Stay warm.
Thank you. So. You, um, what we. Plan is in the policy because there will be. So I don't know if you are. And how we want to. So next part, that we. Talking about. Sports. So, uh.
You mean with, uh, what we're taking care of with the five percent? And the employees takes care of the rest?
So that's.
Yep, yeah.
I want to just say, okay, so. Um, so for, uh. You know. Plan option one. What that means is now.
Yeah.
Just list them off, that'll be part of a.
We got some numbers on these that we have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It doesn't have.
That's. Right, that's.
So, does, does the motion?
I give that.
Need to specify what those amounts are?
Okay.
Okay.
How you doing?
So. So for twenty twenty five, do you want me to, to just?
I don't deal with that.
Give these amounts down here at the bottom?
Uh, the signature one thousand signal rate, single rate, the twenty twenty five, um, premium total is one thousand thirty three dollars and ten cents. The employee portion is sixty dollars and seventy nine cents, and the county portion is nine hundred seventy two dollars and thirty one cents. On the signature one thousand family plan, the twenty twenty five rate is twenty five eighty two seventy six. The employee portion is eight hundred sixty four dollars and forty seven cents. And the county portion is one thousand seven hundred eighteen dollars and twenty nine cents. On the signature two thousand single plan, the twenty twenty five rate is nine hundred thirty five dollars and eighty two cents. The employee portion is nothing on that plan, and the county portion is the full nine hundred thirty five dollars and eighty two cents. The signature two thousand family plan, the twenty twenty five rate is two thousand three hundred thirty nine dollars and fifty six cents. The. I figured I would just send this to you afterwards. Yes.
There, there, the totals are there, they're just not added up. And then the splits.
Yep. I could jump me to start back and go slower, or I just?
No, just go through it and sound.
Okay. Okay, yes. Um, okay, so the signature two thousand family plan, the employee payment, six hundred thirty two dollars and eleven cents. And the county payment, one thousand seven hundred seven. Dollars and forty five cents. On the. High deductible four thousand single plan, the twenty twenty five rate is seven hundred thirty four dollars and ninety two cents. The employee portion of that is nothing, the county portion is the seven hundred thirty four dollars and ninety two cents, and the contribution into the HSA account. Is two hundred thirty seven dollars and thirty nine cents. On the high deductible four thousand family plan, the twenty twenty five rate is one thousand eight hundred thirty seven dollars and thirty one cents. The employee portion is one hundred fifty three dollars and sixteen cents, and the county portion is one thousand six hundred eighty four dollars and fifteen cents. And I'll send you that.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen. And yet.
That's.
Okay.
Yes. Any other questions? I know it gets kind of confusing, but it's, it's.
Yeah. We have two different areas, but she's. Deal with unions and I'm just dealing with. Oh, thank you.
Yep, thank you. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. Got through that. Okay, let's. Move down to our monthly reports, uh, we'll start out with our extension, Jody will come up.
Morning, Jody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, well, cloverbuds are meeting, we have thirty nine cloverbuds, I'm catching up to almost my fifty years last year. Um, members are still enrolling and re-enrolling in four H for the new year, and they still can join. Um, shooting sports registration is open, we have some time slots that are full right now, so some kids don't have as many choices right now. For archery, BB gun, air pistol, air rifle. All these programs will begin in January twenty twenty five, except air rifle will be holding some December night practices that start. This Thursday was set up. Um. Plans are in the works for our farm show lunch counters, we need one more overall chair, um, if interested, please give the office a call and talk to me. At the extension office, um. And then four H has a display at the Watertown Optimist Club Winter Wonderland. Which is open Friday, Saturday, and Sunday evenings from six to nine through December twenty second. Um, it's probably much more beautiful now that there was, there's snow on the ground than there was when I, we set it up and. When I was there, um, each year I have to do a snapshot for. For SDSU, so this was our, my snapshot for this year. Highlighting some of the things in Cottington County. That you can take and. Use for your reading.
Over. Highlighting.
Programs that we have, Kind County on the back kind of talks about the youth reach, um, how many member volunteers that we have certified short term helpers and the rate of. Uh, uh, volunteer time is about a hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred forty two dollars of all their volunteer time that we have, and a thank you on the back to our commissioners, so. Um, are there any questions or?
It's a lot of hours. So.
Yeah, so all the total shows, highlights cloverbuds, our farm safety, our babysitting clinics, um. Shooting sports, our food fund for each, and we are gonna start our food fund for each again this year, we've had fifty kids. Participate last year with around the world, and that's where they cook at home and eat a meal with their family and. Getting more families together at the table, and we are opening it up and I have kids registering for that right now, too. So.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you, Jody.
Oh, and then I have.
No. Number. Let's move down to, let's take care of number ten. Uh, we need motion to approve the memory of understanding between SSU and Kind County for the. Revision of items relating to four H.
Kind of.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any other questions or?
The only other comment is that we have to, uh, she got a new title. Uh, four H educator, we have to address her as now.
A little shorter than four H youth program advisor, so.
It's a lot shorter.
Yeah.
It's on a business card a little.
Yeah, yeah, I haven't gotten anyone to those, I've gone through a lot of business, different business cards in twenty two years.
Yeah.
And titles.
The only thing that's different was that, and then they, uh, our share was twenty two thousand fifty dollars is our share. Of her seller.
Right, and last year it was twenty two thousand four hundred.
Yep.
Slight increase.
Yep.
Any further question? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Jody, keep up the great work. Hey, let's, uh. Dodd, if you wanna. Come up for the.
Point.
Service office.
Good morning, morning. Hey, I'm gonna rattle off some. I sent it to you already.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay, let's start off, we got a hundred and eighty nine open claims, ninety pending at the VA. We've completed two hundred and forty two year to date. Uh, Hamlin County, we currently have twelve open, six that are pending action at the VA, and we've completed twenty for them from that standpoint. Uh, currently working, uh, claims for sixteen veterans outside the county. And with thirty one claims previously completed year to date, uh, outside the county. Um. The. Bringing the, the claims current, uh, we increased that by five thousand two hundred and forty nine in the monthly amount. Monthly compensation year to date was. Uh, a hundred and thirty thousand and some change from that standpoint. Um, the retro payments year, um, for the last month was a hundred and forty eight thousand dollars and some change. Um, year to date, uh, retro payments have been one point two million and some change from that standpoint. We gave four veterans transports to, uh, in, in November, we currently have one scheduled for December. Um, and I think that might be a little changed, cause I think we added like two this morning before we got here, so. Uh, we currently have eight drivers, we gained one, and we have another application being submitted, so we're. Hopefully should be at nine from that standpoint. And just a reminder here that, you know, when I do all these numbers and stuff again, you know, there's, they moved, they're fluid, they're not. We don't spend a ton of time, but it's the way that we track stuff in our office. We do not track any walk-ins, we do not track any phone calls. And, uh, you know, it's surprising that, uh, at some days that. You really don't get anything done, but, you know, taking care of the walk-ins and answering the phone calls, finding out what they need and stuff like that. So you don't get a lot of claims done, but, uh, there are days, you know, the, like, like, uh, Monday, it was really because of the weather and stuff like that, not many people came in. Was able, it's pretty nice, Jay, I said, I got two out today, Jay said, yep, I got two out too, and it's like going, oh, that's a good day, you know, when you can get two. Out from that standpoint, but anyway, just wanted to let you know that we don't track any of that stuff from that standpoint, so. Um, one thing that, um. Was sent out by the South Dakota Department of Veterans Affairs. Is to urge veterans to protect themselves against claim scammers. Again, that's kind of been big lately, uh, the American Legion, the VFW on the national side, along with the DAV. Have pushed and tried to educate the veterans in the magazines and, and at their meetings that, you know, no veteran should ever have to pay. For assistance in filing a claim to the VA. Um, you know, be aware of their personal information that they're giving, anybody that works with the county or tribal or state veteran service officer. They are accredited by the VA, we have to be accredited by the VA. So again, uh, if, if a veteran is working with somebody like that, ask them for their accreditation number, ask them if they are willing to sign a VA representation form. A twenty one twenty two. Um, again, kind of safeguard that, you know, and if it's, if it's too good to be true. That old cliche that it it probably is, and nobody should have to pay. Upfront to have somebody process the claim, there, we've had a couple. Of instances uh of that that we found out recently that uh there's some different online places that. Hey, yep, you know, you could qualify for this, uh we need X amount of dollars to process for you, and then we find out that. Uh, when we get the claim, uh they would have never. Been able to uh to get the benefit because they never qualified, so.
Sure, that's true, so these come mostly in like phishing texts or phishing emails still?
You see them in a variety of places, it it's surprising how many veterans come in and say, hey, I saw this on Facebook.
Oh, really?
Um, it it says that I can get a grant for a new AC or heater or doors. Or they see different stuff like that, be it uh if it pops up in emails and stuff like that. I haven't heard of anybody walking, I I've actually seen uh the one. Instant was um, it's a, it's a, uh you hear it, you see it in magazines. Um, I'm not gonna mention the name, but I mean, it it gets out there and they do, I'm sure they do do some good. But I mean, for that one family, I mean, they paid over twelve hundred dollars and they never qualified. Right up front, so that's a contract that they signed there, so again, I would just, you know, work with your county tribal uh. VSOs, you know, from that standpoint, nobody, like I said, nobody should ever have to pay to to file a claim, so. Um, I meet with the Vets Council tonight, uh along with that, uh the Cottington County Veteran of the Year. Was Jeremy Storm, he comes out of the uh American Legion Post seventeen. He was presented a patriotic flag ring, a certificate, and uh instead of doing the Big Eagle, I went and bought a plaque. And I listed the last past, I think the last five that since I've been here. We put that up in our office, so people can see that there from that standpoint. The ring was donated by um Makepeace Jewelry here in town, and then um. Uh, KXLG did a great uh good news story or good news report, what they did on Jeremy from that standpoint. The um. Veteran slash Military Appreciations of Appreciation Event that was held at Joy Ranch. Uh, on the ninth of November, uh that was received well, good attendance from that standpoint, uh for the first time. That we've done that type of event, um from that standpoint. Um, Joy Nelson has said that, uh you know, planned to have this as an annual event, so that's kind of the thought process there. Our uh, just a heads up, our work study, um looks like there's gonna take a um. She is in the guards, so she's looking to take a Title X trip possibly, so we might be losing her. Um, for the next year, I'm still working on that. One little caveat, I wanna put plug for the Marine Corps. Uh, the Toys for Tots boxes are out and about in the community, we do have one in our office, so if you. Wanna buy a a new um or some toys and put in there, that's great. Um, future, uh I will be going to Hamlin County December Commission Meeting. To review and renew our contract for the funding in TY twenty five, or not TY, sorry. That's training year from an old military person, but in in two thousand twenty five, so sorry about that. Any questions?
Busy.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Dan.
Come give us a good news, Sarah.
Thank you, I am a week early giving my report because I have some good news and some agenda items, I didn't want to come back two weeks in a row, so.
Good news.
Yeah, there is good news. Um, okay, so just, I don't, because I'm early, I don't have my data report yet from the Helpline Center, I know. I I gave them.
Charts.
All the charts aren't here, I told them the fifth is the deadline, and so now, Harry, I am giving my report on the fourth, so I'll get it later today, I'm sure.
Good, that's fine.
Yeah, um, so without that, that our normal report, CARES ERA, the South Dakota CARES Administrative Funds. Carrie has received four thousand dollars in administrative funds from November that will, the county will be reimbursed for. For the Impact CHW Program, they billed two thousand six hundred and ninety eight dollars towards Medicaid reimbursement in November. And so now the big news, we have been awarded the Reaching Rural Funds, that's one million dollars spread out over three years. And Cottington County was awarded that fund, so it's very exciting. Again, that Reaching Rural team is myself, Stacy Hendricks with Brothers and Sisters Behind Bars, Judge Carmen Means. Um, Alexis Bicey with the Watertown Police Department, Carrie Johnston at the Human Service Agency, and Monica Everson. With the hospital, we're the facilitating team for that, and um Commissioner Lee Gable as well for that. Um, so we are the facilitating team that's kind of overseeing it, but we're working to um make sure that we're. Doing what the community wants us to do with that. December twelfth, we have a meeting with our, the whole Advisory Council, and so we'll talk more about the specifics for the grant. Where we're at with that right, the grant right now is we've received notice that we have been awarded that grant. Um, however, we have to accept the grant, and then. Um, Brenda has some pieces that she has to do, and then she'll, and then as if, as the administrator of it, then I'll do some pieces. The grant is intended for people that have been impacted by the justice system that have a substance use disorder, so the whole goal is really to. Get people cycled out of the system and really address the reasons that are causing them to enter the system so that they're not in the system anymore. And that we're really addressing the substance use disorder. Pieces of it, so that we don't have people in jail and in the legal system that don't need to be. We're hopeful that this can have a huge impact on our community with that, and so we really wanna do some big things with it.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Thank you.
A lot of work.
Yeah.
Fantastic job.
Yeah.
Stacy and Sarah spent a lot of time, I know, putting that, putting the package together.
Yeah.
You're the guys that all the detail works with things, that it's not easy.
Yeah. Thanks, eh, yeah, it's it's worth it when you receive. And now it'll be even more exciting to see what happens in the next three years that we have it.
Now, how how are they going to do? And we have to, it's over five years?
Three years.
Three years, three years. Uh, we're not gonna get a lot soft.
No.
That divvied out over three years or?
Yeah, so over, it'll be three hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and thirty three over a year for the next three years. Um, part of, some of the pieces that we have to do yet is finalize the budget, so. We submitted a budget and now we know that was in July that we submitted the budget, since then, we've done a lot of work. We've had a lot of conversations, and so we know that we need to make some changes to that budget. And so that'll be our next step, we'll change the budget and then we'll resubmit that to them and then we'll know better, but.
Do you have to create a line item just for that?
Imagine it'll be a pass through, just like our other grants.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But.
Yep.
It's three dollars short of a million.
Yes, you're right. Right, we we got it as close as we could. Yeah. Yeah.
Fantastic.
Good.
Yes, yep, um, in addition to that, we're also then this week submitting another grant through this reaching world process for a hundred thousand dollars. And that one is also just short, like nine hundred and ninety nine. Like, it's within five dollars. Yeah. Of the um. So we'll be submitting that, and that will actually be to hire a coordinator for all of this work, that's what we've earmarked that. That grant for is a coordinator to um give us some capacity to to do the work that we need to do, so. We'll be finishing that up this week and sending that in. Um, in addition to those, uh I attended um earlier this, or in November, I attended the Grantee convening event sponsored by the South Dakota Community Foundation. That was for recipients of the Beyond Idea Grant and the Large Community Foundation Grants, it was a great event to kind of connect with people across the state. That are doing really big, good things for the state, so some really good information there. I'm also working with the Helpline Center out of Sioux Falls to plan a training to implement the Transition to Success Case Management Program. Um, that's a model I would like our community health workers to use, along with some of the other organizations across the community, so that we're all providing. Similar services to people and make it easier for people to get the service, the right services that they need.
Sure, so is that, that's a software or a web based thing or something?
Well, yes, and so it is, we will, we will be able to use it in our software system, it'll be a different. Um, it it's pretty similar to what we're doing, but it'll be a little bit different. But more than that, it involves like the, a training that will train case managers. And so it's a three day training to, on how you do case management work. And then it gives a different format, what it does is it helps people build their their dream, their plan of dreams. Um, or their dream.
So it's a substantive thing, it's not just, it's not just a.
Not just a software, yeah, yes, exactly.
So, and then, just, we we talked a long time ago, what we're doing, like stepping up with things, but warm handoffs and things, or you know, so that it, so that. So the agency, if it's a person that's to go from one agency to another, to say a nonprofit or something. Um, for help, does that, does that help with that, make it smoother process?
That's the hope.
Okay.
That, I mean, it all depends on who gets on board, what other agencies get on board, but our hope is that if we can bring the training to town. And make it really easy for other organizations to attend that training, that they'll implement it across the board, like the school district with some of their people. Human service, you know, some of those. That if we're all doing the same type of service, it'll make it easier for people across services. Transition to success. Yeah. Um, and that's also on the agenda item today, too. Our interagency meeting is next week, it's next Thursday at nine AM at the police station, and this is our community discussion, just kind of what's going on and what's happening and doing some. Um, scenario discussion, things like that, to talk about how we can serve people. Our Agency of the Month for Cottington Connects is Chamber of Commerce with Santa Land, and our Individual of the Month is Amanda Woodruff. Who has started Rachel's Hope, I don't know if you've heard about Rachel's Hope, but they're doing really great things, providing um. Personal items for people, kind of the things that you can't get assistance for anywhere else, so toilet paper, cleaning products, personal care products, those kinds of things. Um, she's done a great job, so she's our Individual of the Month. The Housing Summit was held in November, we um that had a great attendance, we had some really good discussion there, Commissioner Johnson was able to attend that. And um, I think we came out with some good ideas, we'll be meeting next week to plan our next steps on how we move forward with that. Childcare, we continue to work with the Watertown Development Company and um developing a contract with Klein Visionary and Group to work with businesses. To address childcare needs. Um, we're working, we're reaching out to some people right now about partnerships, and so that we have a little bit more diversity on who is. Part of that planning with that, in that contract with that. And um, our next meeting for childcare is December eighteenth at one thirty, um if anybody's interested, contact our office and we can work on that. And then centralized location, again, this is another one that has kind of just been out there for a while, but we've actually located tentatively, I don't wanna like. Give any specifics, but we've tentatively located a building that we think will work for multiple social service organizations to come together. Um, looking, um also working with somebody who might have some ability for some funding, a grant writer that could potentially help us write a grant for some funding. For that, and so that is starting to move forward, we're meeting again this Thursday morning, uh the first Thursday of the month at ten o'clock is when that group meets. So, yeah.
So I know that this is premature, but would that remove you from your office on Kemp then?
It would change our office location.
Okay, and I know that that's premature to have that discussion yet, but.
Yeah, yeah, it would involve moving um multiple people to a different location, so.
Okay.
Is this a rental or purchase or what, whatever you.
That's all the details to be worked out, one of the things that we're talking about, and and there has to be a lot more discussions, but is is creating like a. L, which is different word, like a corporation type thing, an entity where it's um people that occupy the building, make a nonprofit.
Just form a co-op.
Kind of, that's kind of what it would be, is essentially create a co-op that would own the building. So so it wouldn't be any one entity owning the building on its own, that's the idea floating around right now, so.
So if I could add, the benefit, which I think is wonderful to get all these entities in one location after going through a poverty simulator, you understand. The importance of having that all in one place, so.
Yes, and I think some of the entities that have definite, that are are interested, no commitments, but interested would be obviously our office, the. The County Health Office, United Way, um ICAP, uh. Brothers and Sisters Behind Bars, and so there's a good variety of people that are. Um.
Would that be all of that too?
I don't know that they would, I guess we haven't really had conversations with the hospital because they're so located there, I don't know what. What would be there, but, yeah, so if anybody else is interested in that, we're working on planning.
They can contact you at your office?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it's great, so look forward to further information on that.
Yeah, we'll keep working on it. Be good. Um, so for anything else, remember to check out Cottington Connect for more information on events and things that are happening in the community. That is, that's all.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
One little.
Yeah.
So not a lot going on, man.
Yeah. I I actually thought this was a light report, so.
It's a good report.
Yeah, it was good.
They were.
Thanks, I have a couple other agenda items.
Yeah, um, let's move down to uh. Number eleven, discussion possible action to accept the Department of Justice Comprehensive Opiate Simulant and Substance Use. Site Based Program Grant and approve the chair to sign.
Second.
Motion by Gable, second by Van Dusen, is there any other questions or?
What uh was the amount of that I saw it here?
Nine hundred ninety seven, nine hundred ninety nine thousand nine hundred ninety seven dollars.
Yeah.
The one, the one question, I mean, it's, it, there's some paperwork, it's because it's federal money, so you guys have discussed that, I know.
Just that thirty page thing that we have.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
We're now in the system, which is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They don't just give the money away.
No, yeah.
Federal service.
Yeah.
Any other further question? Seeing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number twelve, discussion possible action to approve the chair to sign the Helpline Center contract.
So move.
Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Gable. And I think you have that.
Yeah.
So this.
Yeah, go ahead.
So this is the one where you're talking about, um, it's changing this, the the conditions to this.
Yes, so what this contract would be, would, this would just be for the training, for them to come up and do that training locally in Watertown.
Okay.
And so this would be contracting with the Helpline Center, what they've said is they would provide one trainer and we would provide a second trainer. We would do it before March of twenty twenty seven. I um, part of getting this in now is I have some money in my twenty twenty four budget for this type of service that I wanna be able. To use for that, and so this would create that contract, and they would come by. By March of twenty twenty five and provide the training for as many community members as we want.
So Sarah, the question that I have is what does that training entail?
So that's it, yeah, that's a good question, it's the three day training to implement the Transition to Success Model for people. In order to be a case manager in the Transition to Success Model, you have to go through this three day training. And so it would allow, it would enable our staff, and then I know I've talked to at least. Watertown Cares wants both of their staff members to go through it, um Brothers and Sisters Behind Bars wants an employee to go through it, so I I'm guessing there would be around ten. At least ten local people that would go through it.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Are there other communities doing this?
Sioux Falls is, and there's some across the country, so transition, I I didn't really talk about this model itself, but Transition to Success has actually been a research based model. Across the country, and so it's used in different locations across the country, we have the opportunity because the Helpline Center is implementing it. That we can piggyback off of them and and get it for basically the training cost versus tens of thousands of dollars for other kind, other communities. Yeah.
Uh, do we need a motion?
We already have one.
Okay, one second.
If there's no other questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Track where we want.
Yeah. Okay, number thirteen, um. Need a motion to declare office equipment and radio surplus to be destroyed or. And to declare salt and spreader surplus to be sold as scrap at the Highway Department.
So move, second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, the number fourteen, uh, discussion possible action to approve the. The COLA for non union, union employee twenty twenty five wages, Natalie, if you wanna come up and just.
Uh, good morning Commissioners, yes, so um we approved the union contracts last week, and as you recall, there was a four percent COLA with that. So I would recommend that you do the same for non-union employees at four percent.
That motion, motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Johnson, any further question?
So this will be effective January one, twenty twenty five, it excludes County Board of Commissioners, yours will be determined, your first meeting in January is when you will set your salaries. Okay.
There's no other questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. Um, number fifteen, a summary of union contract changes. If you wanna go through those.
Yes.
Natalie.
All right, so um here's a summary of what was approved and updated with the contracts. Um, we will have two year union contracts for all three of our unions with the exception of wage openers only um next year. Um, all you employees, union and non-union have the four percent COLA adjustment, as we already talked about, the wage scale has been updated and provided to the Auditor's Office. You will need to approve that as well at one of these next meetings, too. Um, sick leave payout upon retirement was increased to forty percent or four hundred and eighty hours. Um, there was stipulation added in the event of employee's death, the county would also pay that same forty percent up to four hundred and eighty hours. The insurance rates, new premium amounts have been updated, as we discussed already with Crayons this morning. Um, specific items for the specific union contracts, Highway Department. Um, they received a boot allowance of three hundred dollars for the year, can be for multiple purchases, receipts need to be submitted. And cost reimbursed on a regular payroll check from the Auditor's Office. Um, Sheriff's Department has new stipend amounts that were updated for some of their specific positions. Um, such as PPCT, Field Training Officer Dare Instructor, Mobile Technology Coordinator, Firearms Instructor, SWAT Team Leader Investigator, Drone Operator, Drug Recognition Expert, and SRO. On-call compensation for the Sheriff's Department was increased to a hundred and eighty dollars per week. Uniform allowance was increased to eleven hundred dollars per year, um paid on the January check as before. Um, Sheriff's Department increased vacation accrual limits for those under ten years, um up to a new maximum of two hundred and forty hours. Correctional Officers Part-Time Shift Differential was increased to a dollar per hour. And uniform allowance increased to six hundred and fifty dollars per year paid on the January check. Any questions?
Thought it pretty easy, doesn't it?
Did you say that the uniform allowance had been increased to eleven hundred dollars on that?
Yes.
And that's for what, which contract is that?
The Sheriff's.
I don't remember that, did we have that discussion, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
I'm good with it, I just don't remember it, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
We just had several discussions, so it would be. It's a lot.
I know, we need to finalize this thing, let's get it done.
Yeah.
It's fine.
You did approve the contract already with that right end.
I just don't remember that particular item, but that's okay.
So we're just summarizing what they were, yeah.
All right, yes, well, thank you again, Natalie, for all that, because it's a pretty big process to do, and I'm really thrilled, it's a two year thing and.
I can get a year off.
Yeah, for wages. So not completely, but, yes, I appreciate again um the union's participation, and we had successful negotiations. Um, lots of back and forth discussion and.
And it's only the first week in December.
I know.
Well, once ahead.
Yes.
Early Christmas present, Myron.
It is, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Number sixteen, note, Christmas office closures.
Correct, uh, so according to the governor who sent out an email, which we do follow in our policy, we follow what the governor um. Declares for administrative leave, so she's declared Monday, December twenty third. And Tuesday, December twenty fourth, and then obviously we have Wednesday, December twenty fifth, Christmas Day off. And then um with our policy, I just put in here too, that the courthouse and all offices will be closed on Wednesday, January first, New Year's Day. And we will be meeting the fifth Tuesday, since you have the fourth Tuesday off, because we will need to wrap up some items. For that last meeting of the year, any last minute bills?
Did you say?
The last meeting, the thirty first of December, the last Tuesday. Cause I didn't know if you guys would really wanna meet the Thursday or Friday after Christmas, that kind of makes things really rush, so we can probably wrap it all up on the thirty first. And that's a better, very last day.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
Yep. Sounds good, um, number seventeen, is there any?
Oh, no, no abatements, we do have one claim. You gotta grab that. It is, um, it was the Travis outfitter for a uniform, um, in the amount of six hundred twenty-one dollars and ten cents.
Motion by Gable. Second, second by Van Dusen to approve this claim or payment. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
No budget supplements, no personnel, no travel.
We're down to, we're twenty-two. Any, uh. Public notice for a possible quorum, Thursday nights, the farm business banquet. That's. Any other times?
Nope.
Anything, Myron?
No, next week it was kinda busy, but.
Okay, uh, then we will move down to number twenty-three, old business. Any old business? Number twenty-four is new business.
Just to let folks know, so today we have the, our next kind of worker meeting with the architects, construction manager, Tegra. Should, to discuss the jail space. So we have a, we talked about uh, broad needs. And now, now what the, the next step is basically based upon the needs of what, you know, what the sheriff and the jail think they, think they need. Um, and what we know we need based on all the analysis we've done through the CCGHC is um, to identify the square footage. Do more precise square footage is room by room. And so that's, so we have a draft of that. And so that's what we're gonna be going over today. So that's, that's called the space program. I learned, I don't know, it's itself, but that's what, that's what they, they call it. Um, and there's some of the things like, I'm starting to work out. The idea of what, what the basic plan is and that way that allows eventually, you know, with the next month or so, the architect to start actually coming up with blueprints. So come up with prints with, you know, all the details involved with that. So, um, also we, we did take care of the survey. That um, that we approved, so that's, that's been done. And uh, and so things are, things are moving along. Um, you know, the, like I think that we should have planned before. We'd like to break around, you know, sometime in late spring, but we'll see. It kinda depends on some different factors, whether or not we're able to. Plant things in a certain way, you know, the, the, you know, I guess the fastest way, but you still, you don't wanna sacrifice quality or compromise anything. But um, if things go, it is possible to do that. So just to let folks know.
If I remember right, boring's and all that's already been done.
Um, in twenty seventeen. So there is a chance that once we see the, the detailed plans, to come up with an exact spot of the site, you might wanna do more boring's.
Yeah.
But if there's a, you know, all of the, you know, the, the architects can judge the. And the construction guys can, can judge how uniform the boring results were from last time. So if they're fairly uniform, from what I understand, then. Then it's likely the whole site has that same kinda consistency. Um, but if it's, if they don't, if they wanna be sure that it's possible, you might have to do some more boring's. So depending on what they, you know, where, where exactly the thing is planned, is intended to sit on that parcel.
The, the only question that I have is, at this point is, have you been in contact with DOT as far as the uh.
Oh, the approach.
Approach. And I know we had some issues with that. Brenna and I were working on that last go-round. And what they wanted is to be able to go across, be able to make a left turn to go east out of there. And DOT wasn't too happy about that.
Yeah.
Not happy at all.
There's, there's an approach there now, but.
There's an approach.
Yeah, but yeah, okay. I think that's gonna depend on, once we have the more precise site plan, that kinda tell us, you know, where to put that, you know, where we want the, the approach. So, um, yeah.
But that will be a process with DOT to get another approach in there because of their spacing. Anyway.
Yeah, they may have to turn right and then make a U-turn to go left. Who knows? We'll figure it out.
Oh, yeah, it will come together. It's just takes a little bit of planning.
So the site plan's gonna be key for that, you know, the precise, the precise spot where we'd like the, the future approach.
Wonder if you could go to the north and come out on fourth? But that's bad. That's bad underneath the hill because there is a right away there.
I do have one other thing, and this is, Natalie, did you get my email? Apparently you did. Highway soup interviews. I won't, I won't be able to attend. My, my sister passed away and uh, the funeral is uh, Friday. And uh, so I, if someone can sit in for me, I, I won't be disappointed or hurt. There's somebody. Randy, you want to sit in?
I, I can do that.
I, I got scheduled for one o'clock on Friday.
Yep, yep. Glad, glad to do that.
Something that I couldn't help.
Can you send us their packets beforehand so we can review them? I think it's you and I, Randy.
Yep.
And Natalie. Right.
Appreciate that.
Sorry about your loss, everybody.
There's no other, uh. New business, it's time for. Do you have something later?
No.
Okay.
I was anticipating your next words.
It's uh, now time for uh. So, public comment, if someone would like to make public, uh, go ahead.
Come on up, Kyle.
Yeah, come up, we're. Excited about the local paper and you introduced yourself and.
Uh, good morning commissioners. My name is Kyle Givorst. I'm the editor of the Watertown Current Newspaper. Uh, normally I have JT assigned to these meetings and I do know a few of you, uh, Lee Gable and Troy. For the other gentlemen, pleasure to meet you. Uh, we mainly focus on local news, so county commissioners is always one of our uh, cornerstones of our coverage. So we appreciate everything you guys do for the county and we, uh, if you ever have news, please feel free to drop us the line. We're always open to it.
Right.
Thank you.
Covering all this, you know. There's no other public comment? Uh, is there any commissioner comments? Okay, uh, I have not been aware of any need for. Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Two, three months we haven't had an exact session, hasn't it?
Contracts is.
Yeah.
Held us over, so.
Amen.
We're lost.